Representative Stube and Representative Ray Winkle-Vassilinda and others, House Bill 4001, a bill to be entitled and accolading to licenses to carry concealed weapons or firearms.
Representative Stube, you are recognized to explain the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill would allow adults 21 years and older who have gone through the necessary background checks and gone through the necessary training to be able to carry their concealed firearm on a college/university campus in Florida. That is the bill, Mr. Chair.
Are there questions of the sponsor? Representative Roussin, any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, when we were in the Sarasota delegation meeting and Dr. Probstfeld, the president of State College of Florida, was at the podium, I think it was the morning after the Oregon Community College shooting, and you asked her very politely, would she and other college presidents join you in getting campus carry passed? Why do you believe this bill would have made Oregon Community College more safe or would have prevented what happened there?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think law-abiding citizens who have gone through the necessary background checks should have the right to defend themselves whether they're standing in a supermarket, or a restaurant, or a college campus. And for most of the state, there is a mass majority of the areas that licensed concealed permit carrier holders can carry. And there are a few places, and one of those are college/university campuses, where those individuals can't carry. And I don't think that there's any legitimate factual reason to deny those citizens the inability to defend themselves just because they're on a college campus.
Follow-up question, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Well, given that fact and your belief in that, you should have the support of the campus police chiefs or the presidents of colleges and universities in the state of Florida. Do you?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. From my understanding, the colleges and the universities are against the bill.
Additional question, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Harvard Injury Control Research Center said that students with guns at colleges are more likely to misuse alcohol. Does your bill address that type of situation and what would happen if alcohol and guns and students mixed?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There's nine other states that allow permitted concealed handguns on college campuses, and there's never been an instance of anything that you're alluding to. And there's nothing in the bill that would address specifically that issue.
Additional follow-up, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. This same study determined that on college campuses where there are higher levels of gun prevalence, it results in more gun threats. Would you disagree with the findings of that research?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, yes. And in where I went to college, most of the student housing and most of the individuals lived in apartment complexes off-campus. So where the parties were occurring at the University of Florida, most of them were occurring off-campus, and you can carry your concealed firearm there, and there's not an issue.
Additional question, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Are you aware that since campus carry passed in Utah and in Colorado, crime rates actually increased on college campuses?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The facts that I have are the four years prior to the ban in Utah and the four years after the ban, crime rates actually went down.
Additional questions, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Another study of 1,649 students demonstrated that 78% of them surveyed at 15 different public colleges do not support guns on campus, and it would not make them feel more safe. What are you trying to accomplish, other than just a right to carry, what are you trying to accomplish by allowing guns and students to mix on college campuses?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm trying to accomplish the individual's rights to defend themselves. And again, like I've stated previously, I don't think that an individual's right to defend themselves against any attacker, whether it be a terrorist or a mass shooter, whether it be in a restaurant, or a mall, or a shopping plaza, that right shouldn't seep just because they walk onto a college campus. And we have seen time and time again where these gun-free zones and college campuses are targets by terrorists and individuals wanting to harm our citizens.
Follow-up question, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Isn't it a fact that college rapes, for instance, usually start consensual and turn non-consensual, and the presence of a gun would not have stopped that crime from happening?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not aware of that fact. I am aware of the fact that 1 in 5 women are sexually assaulted on a college campus, and on that college campus, they're not allowed to defend themselves with anything other than a handheld stun gun.
Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Well, the National Crime Victimization Survey found that...have you ever found any statistics where a woman was able to fend off a rapist or someone assaulting them by pulling a gun on them on a college campus?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I can give you a number of different examples of concealed permit carrier holders defending themselves. Connors, Georgia, May 31, 2015, a permit holder was walking by a store when he heard shots ring out. Two people were killed. The permit holder started firing, and the killer ran out of the store. Rockdale County Sheriff Eric Levett said, "I believe that if Mr. Scott did not return fire at the suspect, then more of those customers would have been hit by a gunshot. So in my opinion, he saved other lives in that store." I could go on. There's several other examples here that I could go on with. Amanda Collins testified in the overturn of both the repeal law in Colorado and Utah that had she had her firearm on her at the time that she was sexually assaulted, she could have prevented that atrocity from occurring on her, and that individual went on to rape another woman and kill another woman before he was captured.
Follow-up question, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Stube...oh, I'm sorry. Representative Roussin, continue.
Many people tailgate on college campuses for football games. Would you have any concern about the presence of guns and tailgating outside football stadiums?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Right now, while they're tailgating, there's guns in those vehicles, and those are legally allowed. Any concealed permit holder is legally allowed to have a firearm in his vehicle on a college campus. So on every one of those tailgates, there is a likelihood that that concealed permit carrier holder has his firearm in that vehicle. And no, it doesn't concern me.
Representative Roussin for a follow-up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Students, guns, alcohol, celebrations, excitement, anxiety over tests, exams, study pressures, wouldn't it be more prudent to stop or be able to identify who can own guns first as a way of making a college campus safer as opposed to introducing more guns into that mixture?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I can assure you, there's already guns on college campuses because you're allowed to have them in the car. Second, I have seen numerous facts to show that concealed license permit holders are much more safer than law enforcement, and I have no problems with concealed permit carrier holders carrying, just like they carry in other parts of the state.
Additional questions, Representative Jones, any questions? Chevron.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, Representative Roussin took care of the technical aspect. I wanted to kind of ask questions based on the administrative aspect from the university, if you don't mind to indulge for a few minutes. Who has the authority to ask a student or maybe employer if he or she has the permit to carry?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. By law, as we sit here today, every concealed license permit holder is required to have their license on them at all times in case they're questioned.
Representative Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank Representative Stube. As far as the responsibility of the concealed permit holder, if he or she is seeing...if someone...say I walk out and I see someone, the print of their weapon, can I call the police officer or a school administrator to say that I've seen someone guned? Because now it's no longer concealed. Is that correct?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I guess I don't understand the line of questioning, but if you feel that there is someone carrying a firearm that isn't licensed to carry that firearm, yes, you can contact the police.
Representative Jones for a follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I apologize if that didn't come out the way I had it written down on my paper, but that's fine. And thank you for answering it. As far as a staff or a student, if they bring a concealed weapon...can they bring a concealed weapon to some type of service office on the university or college campus? A service office? So Career Center or any instance of that, some type of service center? Can they bring it into that type of office?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, yes.
Representative Jones for a follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And Representative Stube, the only reason I ask that is because currently in Section 7900612 of the Florida statute, it says that specifics that a concealed weapon license does not authorize a person to carry a concealed weapon or firearm into these certain areas. And it lists even within the analysis 15 different areas in which they are not allowed to carry a concealed weapon. And one of those areas on there is in a career center. And some universities and colleges have career centers in there. So will a student be able to carry a concealed weapon in a career center that's on campus, although in the Florida statute, it says that they're prohibited to?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Since there is a separate section specifically talking about college and university campuses, I would assume that that section that you're referring to as it relates to career centers are career centers that are not located on university or college campuses. So it would be my understanding that if this bill were to pass, that licensed permit holders would be able to carry their firearms on college and university campuses minus the athletic events that are also not able to carry.
Additional questions, Representative Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Representative Stube. Some of my questions that I'm eliminating because I think Representative Roussin took care of it. So I know we have two different gun bills that's running. We have the open carry that is next, and we're dealing with campus carry concealed. If the open carry was to pass, and now we have the concealed carry, how would an individual...would you think that an individual would be confused as it pertains to, if I'm on campus, we just passed that I can openly carry a gun, but on campus, it's concealed? So would you...how would an individual decipher between the two?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill only deals with concealed carry. I would defer to you to ask any open carry questions and how they interplay between the two bills to Representative Gates.
Additional questions, Representative Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Representative Stube. When it comes to a student or supervisor, by any means, can a supervisor or an administrator request a list of employer or students who have a concealed weapon permit?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, no.
Representative Jones for a follow-up.
I think I'm done for now, Representative...excuse me, Mr. Speaker, and I'll probably come back for a second round after.
Additional questions, Representative Williams, any questions? Allen.
Thank you, Jason. Mr. Speaker?
Forgot how many Williams we had in here, so just to be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, have you heard from any of the college presidents here, or university college presidents or state college presidents, as support for this bill?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, no.
Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So you know that you have not heard from them, or know that they're not in support of this bill?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have not heard from a single university president as it relates to this bill, period. I have read in newspapers, like I'm sure you have, that they do not support the bill. As far as the college presidents, I have met with one or two, and they are opposed to the bill as well.
Additional questions, Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Have you heard from any professors on any of the college campuses, state university or state college, as support or opposition to this bill?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, I've actually heard from quite a few professors, staff, teachers, students, in support of the bill.
Additional questions, Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Have you heard from any college professors that say they would be concerned that if this bill passes, that they would feel there's a potential for...to be in a threatening situation, say if a student doesn't like the grade that they got on a particular exam or in a class, that they would feel potentially threatened by the ability for them to openly carry their weapon?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There have been professors that have stated such issues in committee. I have not had anybody individually come up and discuss that. And I don't think there's any evidence to support of any history of assaults that have occurred with students based on the fact that they got a bad grade in a class.
Additional questions, Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Is there a requirement for any individual above the age of 21 to notify the college campus police chief that they have a gun or they have a weapon that they are openly carrying? Is there any notification requirement in this bill?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, no.
Additional questions, Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Why isn't there a provision in there to notify campus police that an individual has the ability to openly carry? And the reason I ask that question is because I know here in the state Capitol, when someone...because of a law we passed a few years ago, when they have the ability to bring their concealed weapon in, they have to notify the Capitol Police. Why wouldn't we want to do that on our universities or state colleges?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just like there's not a notification requirement at Publix, or Walmart, or restaurants, or shopping plazas, or parks, or anywhere else in our state where licensed concealed permit carrier holders can carry.
Additional questions, Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate that response. I mean, all of those are private entities, but we're talking about public entities or governmental entities like the state Capitol. So why isn't there a requirement where folks are coming in to public facilities that are state-owned or government-owned facilities? Why isn't there a requirement to notify campus police chiefs or their designees?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, I think in the Capitol, because you go...most people go through a metal detector coming in the building. I have a concealed carry permit, and when I come into the building, I don't have to notify anybody that I'm carrying, as long as I'm not carrying into a meeting of the legislature. So I don't think there's a pro se requirement in the statute to notify anyone in any of the enumerated places that concealed license permit holders can carry.
Additional questions, Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just one last question. Representative Stube, if this bill becomes law, you have a scenario where many of...just recently, we just passed a bill several years ago, a year or so ago, that allowed for early voting to take place on various parts of our communities. And on Election Day, you can have election sites on college campuses. Is there a concern that there may be potential issues as it relates to our polling sites that are on college campuses and having folks maybe potentially feel intimidated?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Polling places are another enumerated location within the statute that a concealed license permit holder may not carry.
Additional questions, Representative Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So you're saying that because of that current...because of current law, even with this bill passing, that those polling sites, although they're on college campuses, would still be protected under the concealed weapon statute that's on the books?
Representative Stube.
That would be my understanding, yes.
Additional questions? Representative DeBose, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, I too attended the University of Florida, and your prior statement, you stated that most campus parties, most staff parties were off-campus. Were you referring to all students?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was referring to my experiences there.
Representative DeBose, any follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. With that, Representative Stube, are you aware that the majority of the minority parties were handled on campus?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not aware of that.
Representative DeBose, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Different question. Am I right to conclude that this bill does nothing to address the fact that there are currently no mental health screenings prior to legally obtaining a weapon?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill is a simple repealer bill. It takes out one sentence, one line in the statute.
Representative DeBose for a follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So as a result of this bill, someone having a mental health crisis, provided they have never been institutionalized, could legally walk into a college campus with a concealed firearm?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, no. One of the requirements to get a concealed carry permit is that you don't have a history of mental illness.
Follow-up, Representative DeBose.
So how would allowing more guns as opposed to individual training of handling situations that may occur on campuses promote safety on campuses?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think people have the right to defend themselves, and I don't think that right should be stripped just because they moved from a subway across the street from a college campus onto a college campus.
Additional follow-up? Questions, Representative Fullwood, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a couple of questions. I didn't have an opportunity to see this bill in committee, so I wanted to ask Representative Stube a couple of brief questions. Okay, so my first question is, I was speaking to my college president in Jacksonville, one of my college presidents, and he mentioned that his chief of police was...on his campus was terrified and that there were stats. Have you had an opportunity to review statistics on college campuses about assaults and altercations at parties or just in general?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, yes. And the facts that I have seen, especially as it relates to states that had a ban and then repealed the ban, crime rates actually go down.
Follow-up question, Representative Fullwood.
Thank you. And have you...in all your deliberations, have you heard from college...the sheriffs or chiefs of the college police departments, and have they expressed support or opposition to the bill?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There are a number of sheriffs in this state that support this legislation, including the ones that I represent in my district. There's a number of very outspoken sheriffs across the state that support campus carry. As it relates to specific chiefs of police at specific universities, no, I've not heard from them.
Additional question, Representative Fullwood.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And just to clarify, and you mentioned earlier that no college, state college or university presidents have supported the bill or signed on to support the bill. Is that correct?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, that's correct.
Additional questions, Representative Stark, any questions?
Thank you, Speaker. The potential for accidental discharge or misuse of firearms at parties where large numbers of students are gathered, or students where alcohol and drugs are being consumed, that's been discussed. And the potential for firearms being used as a means to settle disputes between or among students, that also has been brought up. But I'd like to know how the bill addresses the fact that campus police officers may be responding to a situation involving an active shooter and may not be able to distinguish between the shooter and others with firearms.
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would love to address that issue because I would think every law enforcement officer, when they go through the academy and they go through their training, one of the main things that they learn is how to do target acquisition and how to deal with an active shooter situation. And one of the things, and a great example, is what if there's an off-duty police officer who happens to be on campus, going to class, or doing whatever he's doing, and he legally can carry his firearm because he's a law enforcement officer? And there's an active shooter situation, and that law enforcement officer, who's off-duty, is in civilian clothes and engages that suspect? So you're telling me that local UPD or university police are not going to be able to distinguish between the good guy and the bad guy? That's what they're trained to do. And that's what they do training to do, both in the academy and in their follow-on training. One of the most important things that they learn is target acquisition. So I think, and I support our law enforcement and think they do a good job and would be able to determine the good guy from the bad guy.
Additional questions, Representative Stark.
Well, since we're talking about a college campus, and of course, we keep seeing all these things with these different situations where there's lots of confusion, may or may not have been people there with a firearm to prevent this, but there's mass confusion. Now we're talking about a college campus. Will there be any additional training required on college campuses by law enforcement to help them to deal with the new types of things that might be coming up? Because now we're dealing with different situations.
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill does not do anything to require that any university police departments do additional training.
Additional questions, Representative Stark.
Does it suggest it?
Representative Stube.
No.
Additional question, Representative Stark.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I wanted to know, I know we've talked a little bit, I've heard the term "studies" being thrown about, but can you tell me the names of or what the studies were that says that there is a potential of reducing violence on our campus and what those studies may have said about that?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have the facts from Utah that had a ban, and then they repealed their ban, and there's four years of data after that. I don't know the name of the exact study, but I can certainly provide that to you after this discourse.
Additional questions, Representative Roussin, any follow-up questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, thank you for standing up and answering these questions as best you can. Is a license to carry or a permit to carry a public record?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do not believe that it is, but I don't know for sure. I'd have to check that out.
Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. If it is a public record document that you obtained from a government agency and is not kept confidential, do you see anything wrong with the university having a list of those who are licensed to properly carry while they're on their college campus?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, first would be the Department of Ag and Consumer Services, which issues the licenses. And my understanding is that that's confidential information. So no, I don't think that the colleges or university would be able to obtain that information, or should they?
Follow-up, Representative Roussin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Representative, some colleges and universities have daycare, or charter schools, or collegiate high schools. Would your bill allow guns into those facilities if they're on the college campus?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If the daycare facilities are specifically enumerated in statute that you can't carry now, then no.
Representative Roussin.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Then that also begs the question that was asked earlier, and I'll try to ask it a little bit differently. If open carry passes and campus carry passes, how will that interplay?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And answering that question again, this bill only deals with concealed carry on college campuses. So I would encourage you to ask that question of Chair Gates when he presents his open carry bill.
Additional questions? Additional questions, Representative Geller, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Representative Stube, in answer to a previous question, you enumerated some examples of people who had successfully used firearms to defend themselves and mentioned one involving a store where there was a robbery. Did any of the examples that you gave occur on college campuses?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I've got a whole list of instances that I'm happy to give you a copy of. I do believe that there are several in here that occurred on a college campus.
Additional questions, Representative Geller?
You, can't, thank you, Mr. Speaker. You described campuses, you know, currently as being among the ones that are identified as gun-free zones. And I understand your, I think, your belief that you want to expand the rights of people, as you put it, to defend themselves lawfully. So my question would be, as someone who believes that individuals have the right to defend themselves against crime by carrying firearms, do you similarly believe that there is a zone where individuals have the right to try to defend themselves by accessing gun-free zones if they think that that's in their interest?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I guess I don't really quite understand the question, but to get to the jux of the issue is, I believe that individuals who have gone through the necessary background checks and legally carry a concealed carry permit should have the ability to defend themselves on college campuses.
Representative Geller, for a follow-up?
I'm sorry that I worded it poorly. Let me try and clarify. I understand, I think, that your belief is that people have the right to defend themselves by use of their firearms. Is there also, in your opinion, a right of individuals to defend themselves by choosing to access places that are free of firearms, gun-free zones? Should, is that a choice that you think people should also be able to make in order to defend themselves against the occurrence of crime?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I'd say again, I think that people should have the right to defend themselves, and our gun-free zones have shown time and time again as being targets all across the country for terrorists and mass murderers. I think that people have the inherent right to defend themselves in these locations.
Additional questions, Representative Geller?
Want to beat a dead horse here, but my only point is, I understand that you believe that's a choice people have the right to make, and I respect your belief. That's what you think is, is the way that people can defend themselves is by having their firearms. And that's a choice that you want to be able to make and have other people to make. My question is, do you think that there exists an individual right for someone who views things differently than you to be in a place where they think their best defense is that there are no firearms around them? Is that a right that we have as individuals if that's the choice you want to make?
Believe that's been asked and answered. Representative Stube, for one last bite at the apple.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, and if they have that right, they don't have to carry a firearm. So if they don't want to carry a firearm, then they don't have to carry a firearm. And if that's their decision, then they're welcome to do that.
Additional questions? Representative Cortez J, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, being a retired correction officer, we had training the whole year, various times to go from the academy. Every year we had this training for about, I think it was an eight-hour day that we did, close-quarter combat and all that good stuff. We were discouraged not to use our firearm in the presence of crowds and public places, and I know federal buildings, you're not allowed to carry a firearm. I just want to ask you a question. Do you think there was enough training for these people to be carrying these firearms on campus when they're not trained like me or any other police officer for close-quarter combat, which you could go through somebody's, go through a wall and by accident kill somebody through close-quarter combat and things like that?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not trying to deputize or have a quasi-police force in concealed permit license holders. That's not the purpose of this bill. The purpose of this bill allows that individual who happens to be in that circumstance where his life or her life is in danger, they have the ability to defend themselves instead of being stripped of that right, and they have to either hide under a desk or hide behind a door while some terrorist or mass shooter shoots at them.
Representative Cortez, for a follow-up?
I get your point on defending yourself, but you've got folks, I've been to the training here on security for concealed weapons, and it's terrible. I mean, you're going to have homeless folks with concealed weapons that are not trained right way, carrying these weapons, and then you have a police officer going to come on the scene, and then he's going to not find out who the bad guy is. You said that you're going to know who the guy is, stated. My question is, how is that police officer going to know that that guy that he's going upon is the good guy? Because it's kind of hard when you have like four or five guys with guns out, and you're supposed to know who that guy is. The officer is going into danger himself. How does he know? How is that officer going to know?
Representative Stube, to the substance of the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The same way that he would know in all of the other places in the state that he can react to, restaurants, shopping plazas, malls, public parks, you name it. So if they can't deal with the situation there, then they probably need to have more training to deal with active shooter situations.
Representative Cortez, for a follow-up?
I just want to say, all officers are trained correctly. And, I don't know, in that situation, I just want to say, this bill is going to be...
Representative Cortez, in debate?
Thank you.
All right. Representative Dudley, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, could you talk with us a little bit about the mental health element in people applying for a gun license, a concealed weapon license?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If you have a history of mental illness, then you cannot obtain a concealed carry permit.
Representative Dudley, any questions?
Would you mind giving us the particulars of how we learn about a person's mental illness who is applying for a gun, a concealed weapon permit, that doesn't necessarily divulge the fact that they suffer from a mental illness?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. From my understanding, and you could probably contact the Department of Ag and Consumer Services and ask them directly, but in the background check that is performed, if you've been previously Baker-acted, if you've been previously adjudicated mentally ill, and then there's a form that you fill out in order to swear and affirm that you don't have a history of mental illness, so those would be several of the factors that would be considered.
Follow-up, Representative Dudley.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So conceivably, if someone has not been Baker-acted, there's no official finding that that person is mentally ill, they've been committed to a mental health institution or mental hospital, that if they were not, if they did not divulge their history of mental health issues, they, and that was not of record in the official public records, they could get by that question. Isn't that true?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not aware of any facts or evidence to support that contention, and also, this bill doesn't deal anything with the requirements to have a concealed carry permit. All this bill does is repeal a sentence as it relates to where the concealed license permit holder currently is prohibited from carrying.
Follow-up, Representative Dudley.
I get that. I understand that part. What I'm getting to is, we're talking about student, campus carry, presumably students, right? So a mentally ill student, someone, you know, one of the things that we see very commonly, even in the criminal law, is that sometimes people become incompetent, particularly around the age of, you know, 18, 20, they, you know, show signs of schizophrenia or something. That is not uncommon. And the issue is, or the question is, a mentally ill student that lacks a prior adjudication of being mentally ill, that may not actually be aware that they're mentally ill, could apply for a firearm and get one, right?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. 18 and 20-year-olds would not be able to get a permit. You have to be 21 years or older.
Follow-up, Representative Dudley.
I, thank you. If I said 18, I meant to obviously say within the law and following the law, being 21 as a prerequisite, they don't get any pass on the age requirement. So are you at all concerned about a higher incidence of suicides by students?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No, I'm not concerned. In the states that have concealed carry, there's no evidence to support, there's a rise in suicides due to the ability of law-abiding citizens having to carry. The majority of concealed permit carrier holders in the state of Florida are over the age of 35. If you look at the mass majority, are more senior individuals in our community and not college students.
Follow-up, Representative Dudley.
I think you're helping to make the point if you're saying that most people carrying guns, concealed permit holders are older people. They're older than a college student who's 21, might be 21. So the question is, I mean, have you, have you looked at the incidence of access to guns and the increased lethality with that access to guns and suicide amongst college-age students?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have not seen any facts or evidence to show that in states that have concealed permit carrier holders on college campuses, that the incidence of suicide is rising because of that change.
Additional questions, Representative Dudley?
Would you be shocked to know that students, even 21-year-old students, present with a much higher number of emotional issues, mental health issues, career issues, girlfriend issues, all kinds of issues that happen to occur very often on college campuses?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill isn't talking about college students. This bill is talking about licensed concealed permit holders, who actually are an extremely law-abiding group of people. In the 28 years of history that we have in the state of Florida, from the numbers that I have done, licensed permit holders are six times less likely to commit a crime than law enforcement officers. So no, I don't have any concerns that these individuals, that there's going to be a raise in increases of crimes, or there's going to be a raise in increases of suicides because of their ability to carry on a college campus and not across the street in their apartment complex.
Questions, Representative Pilon, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Representative Stube, for answering all those questions. As a lifetime member of the NRA and a retired law enforcement officer who is allowed to carry any place in the United States if I qualify in a combat course every, every year, I'm just wondering, is there anything in your bill that would prohibit, doesn't have to say, but is there anything in your bill, in this repeal, that would prohibit university or college campuses through their law enforcement or classes to have folks with concealed weapons permit go through situational training for terrorism or shoot, don't shoot type of situations? Or anything that would prohibit them from doing that voluntarily?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No, and I'm sure that universities would welcome the opportunity to have such programs.
Additional questions, Representative Clark Reed, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, you say you are a concealed weapons permit holder. And you say that, you know, you feel very comfortable with carrying your concealed weapon wherever you are. Why do you think you cannot carry your concealed weapon in this chamber?
Representative Stube.
Because the law doesn't allow it.
Representative Clark Reed, for a follow-up?
And do you think that that's the same reason why you cannot carry it on college campus at this time?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, which is why I've also filed a bill to repeal the prohibition of members carrying in the chamber.
Additional questions? Representative Ray Winkle-Vassalinda, any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, do you know how many concealed weapons permit holders are between the ages of 21 and 35?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Can you just give me a second and I'll try to find that for you? Unless you already know it.
Representative Ray Winkle-Vassalinda, any rhetorical questions?
It's 265,000 approximately. Is this bill doing anything to raise that number of concealed weapons permit holders between the age of 21 and 35?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No.
Representative Ray Winkle-Vassalinda.
Representative Stube, what is the percentage of people who have concealed weapons permits and who have also committed a crime?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. From the numbers that I've pulled from the 28 years of data in the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and the Department of Ag and Consumer Services on taking back licenses from permit holders that have committed a misdemeanor or felony, on an annual basis, .0002% concealed license permit holders lose their license because of committing a misdemeanor or felony on an annual basis.
Representative Ray Winkle-Vassalinda.
And so that, that percentage would, if we were mathematicians, we could figure out what percentage of the eight, the folks that are between 21 and 35 commit and have concealed weapons permit hold, would be concealed weapons permit holders, would commit crimes. We could extrapolate, and we would come up with, with an even smaller number.
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, it would probably be a fifth or a quarter of that number.
Additional questions, Representative Watson, any additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, can you tell me what is the average age of when a student enters into college?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't know the answer to that question.
Representative Watson, any follow-up?
Would it be surprising to you to know that it's approximately 17? My next question would be to you is, because you cannot carry a gun until you're 21, there's approximately four years that student is on campus. How does that make him safer not being able to carry a gun?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative, if you want to file a bill to allow 18 to 21-year-olds to carry a concealed firearm, then I welcome you to file that bill.
Additional questions, Representative Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It's not about filing bills, Representative. I think we're talking about open carry on universities and colleges. And there on those campuses...
Representative Watson, we're talking about concealed carry.
Thank you. But my question still remains, since we have 17-year-olds that are going to be on those campuses, how can we justify having to have those guns on campus when they have to actually wait by law till they're 21-years-old? How does that make a parent feel safer with the children not being able to carry the gun?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That's the current status of the concealed carry permit statute. This bill doesn't do anything to address the concealed carry permit requirements. It only simply repeals one provision of the prohibited areas in the carry permit statute.
Follow-up, Representative Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Can you tell me what percentage of the permits that are in the state of Florida are held by men?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do not know the answer to that question.
Representative Watson, for a follow-up?
My question to you then would be, how would it make a parent or a grandparent feeling that their daughter is safer on campus when knowing that the percentage are more men than women, and she has to wait four years in order to be able to protect herself?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would contend she's not safe on camp... Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would contend she's not safe on campus because she's in a gun-free zone, and she doesn't have the ability to defend herself or others, just like other women. And the statistic that came out last year when I was presenting this bill is, one in five women are sexually assaulted on a campus. And a lot of those women, and some of which have testified in the committees that this bill's presented in, have testified that they would like to be able to carry their concealed firearm to be able to defend themselves against an assault or something occurring to them on a college campus.
Representative Watson in questions.
Thank you for that bit of information. When we look at the fact that they were testifying, how many of them were of age to be able to have a permit to carry?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Several, from what I recall, every single one of them that testified, with the exception of maybe one, were of the age to carry and have a valid concealed carry permit.
Representative Watson in questions.
Thank you. Would it surprise you, Representative, that every individual parent or professor or student that I spoke to are opposed to this bill? Would that surprise you?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, because most of the parents, teachers, and students that I speak to support this bill.
Representative Watson for a follow-up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Having had the opportunity to speak to a number of students and a number of parents and a number of organizations that are actively involved in campuses, and also presidents, as well as some of their campus police chiefs, I found no one in my goings to support this bill. Now, my question to you is, how does carrying the guns on campus going to make an 18-year-old or a 19-year-old or a 20-year-old safer?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think that having law-abiding citizens like myself and others who have a concealed carry permit, especially those that have served in the military and have proper training to deal with active shooter situations, or anything for that matter, should be able to defend themselves. And if that 17- or 18-year-old happens to be in a nice location where someone like me happens to be standing with them, I'm sure she's going to be very happy that somebody like me had the ability to defend her and myself from an attack.
Additional questions. Representative Watson.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Representative, I, I'd like to propose a scenario, and I heard one of my colleagues kind of mentioned it, when we have everyone, or not everyone, but a number of individuals on the campuses being able to have guns in their possession and carry them openly, my concern would be, if we have the response of the campus police, and there's a number of people holding guns, and they're in somewhat of a circling fire squad, how do you determine who's the perpetrator? When we're not attaching any kind of additional training to your bill to make sure that they have that capability? Because the training for a campus police offers, officer is much different from that of a patrol officer.
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As I've answered that question been previously asked, I'm not trying to deputize anyone. And just like law enforcement deals with these scenarios off-campus and have the proper training to deal with that off-campus, they can deal with it on-campus.
Additional questions. Representative Rusan in questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And Representative, Representative Pilon kind of hit on something. But you indicated that nothing in this bill prevents a college or university from conducting safety training. Is that correct?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That's correct. And from what I am aware, there are a lot of college campuses that have concealed carry permit classes.
Additional questions. Representative Rusan.
In the bill analysis, it said that there's an indeterminate increase in recurring and non-recurring administrative costs should this bill pass. Do you know what those costs refer to?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. From my understanding, it's an indeterminate fiscal impact. And I, I don't think that staff's annotated specifically what those costs would be because it's indeterminate.
Additional questions. Representative Rusan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. It used the word indeterminate increase, but the operative word that I'm getting at is administrative costs. So what do you think are administrative costs to universities and colleges for implementing, that this law would affect?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't think there would be any costs.
Additional questions. Representative Rusan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Are you aware that in Texas, it was estimated that there was a $100 million additional cost to universities and colleges for liability insurance and other things as a result of the campus carry bill that passed?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No, and I'm also not aware of any increased costs in Colorado, Idaho, Kansas, Michigan, Mississippi, Oregon, Utah, and Wisconsin.
Additional questions. Representative Grant in questions.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Stube, I know we've talked a lot, and this is an emotional issue, and people have differing opinions on this, but I'd like to maybe move outside of the hypotheticals and outside the what-ifs and, and look at some of the facts that we've seen historically. Can you share with us, to the extent that you've done research on the mass shootings and these terrorist acts that have happened, the breakdown of, I don't know, are they overwhelmingly in gun-free zones? Or what do those numbers look like over the last 50 years for a sec?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I'll quote a article by John Lott, so I don't get misquoted. "Since at least 1950, all but two public mass shootings in America have taken place where general citizens are banned from carrying guns." We've seen time and time again our costs, our country, both San Bernardino, that was a gun-free zone, Virginia Tech, that was a gun-free zone, the shooting at Florida State, that was a gun-free zone, time and time again, that individuals actually target gun-free zones. If you look at the diary of the Dark Knight shooter, the shooter that shot the movie theater in Colorado, in his journal, he discussed that he didn't attack a airport because of substantial security. And I believe there were seven different movie theaters within four miles of his residence. And only one of those seven movie theaters did not allow concealed permit carrier holders to carry. And that's the movie theater that he hit. So we see time and time again evidence that terrorists and individuals who want to kill as many people as possible until law enforcement arrives, target gun-free zones.
Additional questions. Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You talked about the, the Dark Knight shooter. What about the situation we had in Oregon? Was there any evidence to, to suggest why the particular university in Oregon was the location of that, that act?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. From the Oomquat's own website prohibits carrying on college campus. And there is an appeals court decision in, I believe it was 2011, that allowed the individual colleges and universities to decide for themselves whether they ban concealed carry or not, or authorize it in certain circumstances. So it's my understanding that general license permit holders could not carry on the grounds there in Oregon.
No questions. Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We heard a lot about mental health hypotheticals and, you know, what would happen to somebody who was mentally ill and accessing a concealed carry permit and then carrying out an act. Would it surprise you, are you aware that Representative Watson's good bill a couple of years actually incorporated mental illness or dangerous persons' data into the DAX database when somebody applies for a concealed weapons permit?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No, I was not aware of that.
Additional questions to the substance of the bill. Representative Grant.
Thank you. To, to the substance of the bill, if you were aware that the DAX database actually includes mental illness or dangerous persons' data, would you agree that this bill doesn't do anything to expand access to a mentally ill person trying to get a concealed weapons permit?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, absolutely. And there's really no evidence to show that concealed license permit holders are committing crime in our state.
Additional questions. Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You talk about concealed weapons permit holders committing crimes. If I were to go back to the days of practicing law as a concealed weapons permit holder that I am, and I tried to walk into the courthouse, and I forgot that my sidearm was in my bag, and I went to go through the security checkpoint, and it was discovered that I had violated the law with where I was carrying, would I ever be able to obtain a concealed weapons permit holder, license again?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I know it's very, very difficult to get that license back after it's been removed. And, and most of the times, in the stats that I previously talked about, where concealed license permit holders have lost their license, it was because of that very fact. They forgot that they were walking into a location and forgot that their firearm was on them, and then they've committed a misdemeanor and therefore lose their license. And it's my understanding that it's very difficult, once you lose it, to get, to reobtain it.
Additional questions. Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We heard a lot of questions about whether university presidents or college professors had contacted you. And I know we had some testimony in one of the committees you presented this bill. But, but are you aware that there's a college professor who happens to be the prime co-sponsor of this bill?
Representative Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am.
Additional questions on the bill. Are there amendments on the desk?
None on the desk, Mr. Speaker.
So the bill rolled over for third reading. Please read the next bill.
By Judiciary Committee, Justice Appropriations Subcommittee, Criminal Justice Subcommittee, and Representative Gates and others, CS for CS for CS for House Bill 163, a bill to be entitled and accolade to weapons and firearms.
... existed in the Chicago Sun-Times and the Los Angeles newspapers, and everyone began to paint Florida as the gun-shined state. And the legislature, in its infinite wisdom and...